Good evening and welcome to the Cabarrus County Board of Education's Monday, November the first, 2021 work session. I will call the meeting to order and thank you to all of you that are joining us in the viewing audience and streaming, and I would ask that we all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Board members, we will begin with setting the agenda at 3:01. May I have a motion to adopt the agenda as presented?
So move.
Second, I have a motion by Ms. Blackwell, a second by Ms. Adcock. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. And next, we will move to items under 4.01 and start with Board Chair comments and the Superintendent comments. Just a couple of quick things. We, Dr. Kapiki and I spoke about creating two additional Board of Education steering committees. So details and job descriptions will come later on in this week, and we'll discuss that more in depth next Monday at our business meeting. But I would like to appoint the board members tonight that will sit on those. So for our first steering committee, which will be a student support steering committee, I would ask that Ms. Sandage sit on that committee. Is that good for you, Ms. Sandage?
That'll work.
Okay, thank you. And I do need a second person, just for backup. We've talked about, we all sit on a lot of committees and a lot of boards, but it is really good to have two, just in case someone has a conflict. So I would ask that, I can take that one if everyone's good for that, or if there's someone else that would like to have the position.
I bet.
I had a feeling. Okay, so I will actually appoint myself to that one as well. Then the next one is the Literature and Supplemental Materials Steering Committee, and I have asked Ms. Carpenter, Ms. Adcock, and Ms. Blackwell if they will sit on that. Is that all good for the board? Good? Okay, great. Next, we will need to be looking at a timeframe to schedule our annual planning session sometime in January or February. So I've asked y'all to look at your calendars and just give some options so that we can work with the staff to put that day together. And if you have any questions, you know, just get those to me later. And then also, we have one day session of training for the Board of Education that we'll need to maybe set aside, maybe three or four hours on a Friday afternoon or a Saturday morning if we can. So just look at that and give me some options for that as well. Okay, and with that, I will turn it over to Dr. Kapiki.
Just a few brief announcements this evening. First and foremost, I would like to make the board aware and all of our public that Dr. Kelly Probst has started today, and she is now running our Innovation Engagement Office, and we welcome her and look forward to working with Dr. Probst and tapping into her depth of experience and knowledge to continue to make our district even better each day. Kelly's going to help us with a lot of strategic planning, a lot of vision work, and a lot of engagement and a lot of involvement or partnerships within the community. So I want to welcome Dr. Probst. Also, I'd like to continue to point out and thank our teachers, our staff, including our bus drivers, our maintenance folks, our cafeteria workers. It's the little things that I notice when I'm walking across and visiting schools and entering the buildings. First and foremost, the first thing you notice when you walk into any building is the cleanliness of every building. The floors are shining, bathrooms are well-kept, the outside of the buildings are well-maintained. It says a lot about our maintenance staff and the pride that they take and how well they're taking care of our buildings, and it's noticeable, and I want them to know that we appreciate it. Our bus drivers are doing second and third runs as they continue to operate and manage over the short, as it is not only here in Cabarrus County, but it's a nationwide problem in terms of getting our bus drivers. I would encourage anybody that is looking for employment to please reach out to Art Whitaker in our Transportation Department. If you're interested in learning how to drive a bus, Art can kind of guide you down that road, no pun intended. And we are definitely seeking those to, those folks out there looking for opportunities to work. But I do want to thank our Transportation Department because I did do a fantastic job of getting our kids in and out of our buildings and to the various activities that they need to go to. Oftentimes, we overlook that, but without our bus drivers doing what they do on a daily basis, we don't operate, so I thank them for that. You know, the same thing with our cafeteria and the maintenance workers, they're just doing a great job day in and day out, so I appreciate that. Sadly, we've had some tragedies over the last week or two. One of the things that I've been able to observe and I don't even want to say work closely with because that would not be an honest statement, but it's more an observation and seeing the fine people that work here in the Cabarrus County school system. Especially, I want to thank Amy Jewell, Amy Lauter, and John Basilis, and all the social workers and counselors that have helped us through some of the tragedies that we just experienced. Their leadership and their, I'm going to say their soft touch and their professionalism was, it was amazing to watch. It was a very tedious situation, both situations, I thought they handled impeccably well, and they are credited to this school system, and we really, we all of them are gratitude of thanks for all the great work that they do, which I think is difficult work at its best, so I thank them. I'd like to thank Amy Goff and the Cabarrus County Education Foundation for the wonderful luncheon they put on last week, and it gave us an opportunity to showcase the many things that go on here in the district and the things that they support and that partnership was, which is so essential to us. They have impacted, and I think this is a low estimate, according to them, over 112,000 students over the 20-year inception of that particular foundation. More importantly, they have given us $600,000 in financial support over the last 20 years. That's an amazing contribution, and their work has impacted kids in every good way that it can. So I would encourage anybody that can donate to that foundation to please do so and support it because the work that they do is essential to helping us continue to be successful in reaching out to kids. I'd like to thank Burlington. They just opened up a store recently, and in that opening, they've asked us to come out to celebrate that grand opening. By doing so, they also gave a $5,000 donation to Weddington Elementary Schools to help support some of their innovation concepts that they're doing there with Chastity Dolan and her team. So I'd like to thank them for that donation and that support. It's another example of a local entity and a local business reaching out and supporting our school system and our kids. And then lastly, I'd like to remind everyone that there is no school tomorrow. It's Election Day. Get out and vote. And the following week, on November 11th, it's Veterans Day. We will be off that day as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Kapiki. Okay, and next, we will have committee reports, and I know, Ms. Adcock, I'm going to start with you, and if anyone else has anything, just be ready.
Okay, thank you. So I just wanted to give an update on the BOE, this Board Student Interns, and what they've been doing over the last few weeks. They were able today to attend a CNI committee meeting, and they also met with Dr. Kapiki for a Q and A session, and they were very curious, asking all kinds of questions. They're really getting a lot of information about the broadness of the school system and really are enjoying the opportunity to do that. I also just wanted to piggyback on what Dr. Kapiki said about the Cabarrus County Education Foundation. On February the 26th, from 7:00 to 11:00, there's going to be a Mardi Gras night, and you can buy tickets online for that. And again, that supports the Education Foundation, which also supports our school system. So thank you.
Thank you. Board members, any other comments or committee reports from anyone else? Hearing none, I will move to Board Attorney comments. Jay, Jonathan?
Jonathan.
Okay, great. Good evening.
Good evening. Board members, I was asked to present to you about some of the current events in connection with the National School Board Association that has been in the news in the last several weeks. During the month of September, unbeknownst to the public, the National School Boards Association leadership was coordinating with the Biden administration to put out a letter, to send a letter to the Biden administration asking for federal law enforcement assistance with incidents that were occurring at certain school board meetings throughout the country. On September 29th, the National School Board Association sent its letter to President Biden. That letter's up on your screen. And this letter got a lot of attention eventually. The first sentence is that America's public schools and its education leaders are under immediate threat, and the National School Board Association respectfully asked for federal law enforcement and other assistance to deal with the growing number of threats of violence and acts of intimidation occurring across the nation. On the second page of that letter, a few paragraphs that begin with "as these acts," the National School Board Association wrote to President Biden, "As these acts of malice, violence, and threats against public school officials have increased, the classification of these heinous actions could be the equivalent to a form of domestic terrorism and hate crimes." And that's really the line that got a lot of attention, the National School Board Association kind of equating acts of parents at school board meetings with potential classification as domestic terrorism. But that letter really didn't get much attention until a few days later, on October 4th. And if you can pull up the memo from October 4th, in a memo from the United States Attorney General, who oversees the Department of Justice in Washington, a memo to the FBI and federal prosecutors, the Attorney General directed the FBI to work with federal prosecutors across the country to begin having meetings to address what was mentioned in the National School Board Association's letter, and that is potential violence or intimidation occurring at school boards. In the weeks that followed that memo from the Attorney General, there was an outcry in the media, including on social media, but also national media. There were hearings in the Senate and the House, and the Attorney General was asked about that and was criticized by many members of the Congress for essentially coming after the First Amendment rights of parents to speak and to be concerned and to be angry if they chose at school board meetings. Of course, violence and threats of violence are illegal, and those are items that are handled by local law enforcement. So folks were questioning why federal law enforcement, the FBI, and other federal law enforcement agencies would be called in. And that was the controversy, and it reached a point such that our state school board association, the National School Board Association, responded to an organization that inquired about it. And if you can pull up that statement, please. Executive Director LeAnn Winner issued a statement stating, "The North Carolina School Boards Association had no role in creating the National School Board Association's letter to President Biden. We were not privy to any drafts of or conversations about the letter prior to its release. The Association does not agree with the tone or language in the letter, nor the request for federal agencies to intervene in our communities. I've written to both NSBA President Garcia and NSBA interim executive director Chip Slavem conveying the Association's disagreement with the letter's tone and contents." I'll just read the next sentence. "NCsba," that is the North Carolina School Boards Association, "strongly believes that students, parents, and community members should and need to be able to voice their opinions to their elected officials." The rest of that statement describes how violence and, of course, threats of violence and intimidation are illegal and should not be tolerated, and it is up to local law enforcement to investigate such things. As a result of the backlash that the National School Boards Association received and the backlash that the Attorney General of the United States received, on October 22nd, the National School Boards Association essentially retracted its letter to President Biden. In a memo that you'll see on your screen now, to its Board of Directors, the National School Board Association stated, quote, "We regret and apologize for the letter." They say that the language was not called for. In the middle of that second paragraph, the National School Board Association states, "However, there was no justification for some of the language included in the letter. We should have had a better process in place to allow for consultation on a communication of this significance. We apologize also for the strain and stress this situation has caused you and your organizations." The Congress has gotten involved in not only questioning the Attorney General, but the Republicans on the House Judiciary Committee are investigating the matter and have sent a letter and asked for information from the National School Boards Association about how they may have coordinated with the Biden administration and what the National School Boards Association is going to be doing going forward on this. There has been a lot of reaction across the country. If you can call up the states that have left. 23 states thus far have distanced themselves from the National School Board Association's letter to President Biden that characterized parents potentially as domestic terrorists. Five of those 23 states, that is, the state school board associations, have left. They have withdrawn from the National School Board Association. Those states include New Hampshire, Pennsylvania, Ohio, Missouri, and Louisiana. One local school, well, let me backtrack and say that it is state school board associations that are members of the National School Board Association, but as a local school board, you have services that you receive from the National School Board Association. There's kind of an urban program that some school boards join, and there's another program called National Connect that some local school boards join. You joined the National Connect program. And one local school board in Arizona voted last week to discontinue its participation in the National Connect program of the National School Board Association. It pays dues, and presumably, you pay dues of $8,620 a year to participate in that National School Board Association program. So those are the facts on the ground as they stand today. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Okay, so I'm going to allow the board members to make comments, and I'm not sure we'll take any action tonight, but I do want to hear the pleasure of the board if we should do that. So the amount was 8,000, what?
8,620 is what that local school board in Arizona made public, that they had paid to be a part of that program through the National School Board Association.
Okay, and I feel like the North Carolina School Board Association, that we're a member of, made it very clear that they had no part in that at all.
Correct. Right, I read most of that statement, correct.
Right, and they definitely didn't ask for any feedback from locals, so I'll just start with Ms. Adcock.
I do have a question. Do you know if the National School Board Association has lobbyists that they pay inside of?
I believe they do. I believe they do have people in Washington, D.C., yes.
Okay, so when we pay our North Carolina School Board Association fees, does that go to the lobbyist?
Presumably, some of that indirectly goes to the National School Board Association, and that ends up going toward paying for lobbyists, presumably, yes.
Thank you. Ms. Carpenter?
Yes, thank you. Well, I mean, I would like to see, I mean, I think we ought to take a stand again. I think the North Carolina Association, our, North Carolina, they firmly said they did not agree with it, but I just think it's unexcusable. I think it stands against everything that this board stands for, and if we do not need to participate, I don't think we need to. I don't think we get anything from there, and I think it goes against everything that our board stands for. And I'm just saying that, and that's what I believe in, and if we don't need to participate and we can still be with the North Carolina School Board Association and participate with them, I think we need to drop out of this, that one. I think our local people have protected us well, and still let our parents say what they want to and have their freedom of speech, I think we're good.
All right, thank you, Mr. Fur.
I definitely agree with Ms. Carpenter. You know, maybe we need to look and see what we get for our $8,000, which I have no clue what, but if we're getting nothing, then there's no need to continue down that road.
Mr. Walter?
Yeah, I do think the public needs to know what the value that we get from being part of that association. It also means that leadership matters, and if we're sitting here and we don't get involved in the national level and who's elected as leadership of that organization, I think we do need to be involved more and actually work on appointing the right people that essentially follow our views, because obviously, that does not, I also disagree and was strongly shocked when I saw, read that letter.
Ms. Blackwell?
So as usual, I think the federal government has overstepped their bounds, and unfortunately, that is not something that happens unt too often nowadays. So I totally agree with the rest of my board members. I think that this is not anything that we need to participate in. We need to take a stand against this absolutely ridiculous allegation that parents are a threat in any way to these boards. So I think we should pull out of whatever we can pull out and not spend our money on anything involving that and making sure that this money, even $8,000, I can imagine that we can do a lot of good things here with the $8,000 that we're spending for them there, so.
Ms. Sandage?
Thanks for the information, Jonathan. That was eloquently summarized for us. I would like to know the pros and the cons of just letting something go before we just let something go. I also would want to know more information. You said that there was one state who, Arizona, who identified the amount of money that they would save, or is that the one state that discontinued the services?
It was one local school board. I think it was, it's called the Chandler Unified School District in Arizona, that voted to withdraw from the National Connect program that they participate in with the National School Board Association. And to, it's an $8,620 charge, and they publicized it. They publicized the invoice that they had paid, and they voted to no longer be a part of that program with the National School Board Association. Presumably, they remain a member with their state school board association.
Okay, so I guess what I'm asking is I would like for us to know what we're discontinuing before we discontinue it. What are the pros and potential cons from a legal standpoint before we just discontinue something? I do think that people should have their right to speak, and no one should have their First Amendment rights infringed upon, but I also believe that people shouldn't be targeted and threatened in the same token, so thank you.
You're welcome. Madam Chair, I'd be happy to advise the board on that in closed session.
That's great. That's exactly what I was going to say. Okay, and so I want to add, yeah, I'm going to add this to the agenda for action next Monday night, and then you can just give us an idea of where you think that needs to go, a statement, you know, the benefits versus the services that we receive, and then we can talk about it in closed session.
Okay.
Okay, great. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Okay, and next, we will move to 5.03, and I will have Dr. Kapiki back to the podium. If you would like to give us an update, or we are going to move this to next Monday night. Okay.
So very briefly, our positive cases effective today were at 48, which is the lowest they've been since I've been here. Our quarantines were hovering around 213. There may be a little bit of wiggle room in that number, but that is also the lowest it's been since August 23rd. So both of those are at the lowest they've been since we started school. Our quarantines that are turning positive are up about 2%, but it's a minor number. There are only 15 students that that's impacted, and I don't mean that in a negative, I don't mean that in a, I don't mean to say that doesn't matter. It matters greatly, but my point is the numbers are not real high. We want everyone to be healthy. So if we were to look at the current metric that we're, the metric-based guidelines right now, the positivity rate in the community is 5%. Our case counts are at 554, which slides that down into the yellow, which is also the lowest it's been in quite some time. The positive cases for the school district are, as I said, 48, which is green, and the quarantines are 213, which again puts us in green. So three of the four metrics remain in green, and our numbers right now are holding steady and slowly improving. So I will keep the board updated on those numbers as we move forward.
Thank you. That is the best report we've heard in a very long time, and we are glad to hear it.
Can we put that on Board Docs?
Actually, you received those slides today.
All right. I will get them up on the Board Docs, and I'll make sure that they're there for the community's sake.
Because I'm sure the public is interested to see where we're at. I'd like to.
Sure. And again, I'd be remiss. I want to again point out to our teachers and staff, we're doing a fantastic job at the mitigating of keeping our kids safe and themselves safe. Every day they come in and they're doing a fantastic job, so I want to commend them for their efforts as well, as well as our administrative team. So I think everybody's doing their part in trying to make sure that we have our kids in school, which is always what our goal has been and will remain to be, that we're in session in school. So thank you.
And that is exactly right. We really appreciate everyone on behalf of the board that moving through this has been, we know, a little more challenging, but it's evidently been met and exceeded, so that is really good news. All right, board members, we are going to move to the consent agenda, which are items under 6.01, Policies for Approval on First Reading. We are going to have Ms. Sue Burns to the podium, and I am going to continue the process we usually start with on policy reading, and if you have any comments or questions or you need any additional information, let's let Ms. Burns know tonight or get us an email out during the week. So we'll start with 2302, which is Remote Participation in Board Meetings. Any comments or questions? Hearing none, 3410, Testing and Assessment Program. Comments or questions? 4120, Domincile or Residence Requirements. Comments or questions? 4150, Student Assignment, Transfer, and Program Choice Enrollment. Comments or questions?
Can you go over the background on why they changed?
Um, yes, hang on one second. John, do you want to just, you might as well speak to it. I'll let John share that with you.
That's fine, and Sue and John, just, that's okay. Just so we know which one switched. I was going to have a question because the policy code actually states school assignment, and on our agenda, it says student assignment, so.
It's school assignment, transfers, and program choice enrollment.
Okay, all right. Thank you for the clarification.
4150.
So, thank you. So do you want a brief summary, or was there a specific question?
Again, more summary, but right, so we didn't have dates before. All of a sudden, you've stuck in dates and things that people have to meet that they didn't have to meet necessarily before that, so.
Right, so there's a bit to this. Some of this is informed by student services experience with the board itself. So as you all know, we receive numerous hardship requests throughout the year, and then we resolve most of those on our own, sometimes through the hardship process. Sometimes we look for informal options to be able to make sure people's needs are met. And then there, we also have an additional layer of resolution through Appeal Committee. Sometimes when the, when we will have families who will ultimately end up appealing to the board, and the board gives us some decisions that help us to refocus our interpretation of the policy. So for me, what I need to do is to make sure, as a good steward of the time, that the people who work in my department is to make sure our policies align with our practices. So what I'm trying to do here with this policy is ensure that we have these things in alignment between practice and policy. So by putting some of the specific dates in there, one of the things I've heard members of this board say is, where does it say that? I'm not sure that parents are able to find that. It doesn't say that in the policy. And those are valid, right? Those are some important things for us to make sure that if we're going to hold people to dates and we're going to hold ourselves to those dates, it would make sense to have those dates embedded in the policy. If we're going to hold a standard, for example, that we want to see evidence of a hardship, that we should also put that in the policy. I think what that does is it creates a greater alignment between what people are applying to and their awareness of what they're applying to and what the needs are. The other part, well, hold on, Mr. Walter. I'm going to pause for a minute and see if that answers your question before I go on further.
Okay, well, that kind of explains the why. Can you explain? Can you explain what the changes are then?
Sure. All right. So what I'd like to do is to bring your attention to page seven where the, the red text is. The red text sort of breaks out some of the, some of the changes. So Roman numeral six says, fair to provide any of the above will result in a denial of the request. So this was some of the feedback that you all gave us in the past to say that, let's make sure parents understand what it is that's being asked of them. And then obviously that if you, if, it matters if you provide us that information or not. So in other words, if somebody were to say, I just have a, I have a hardship, you sort of have to take my word for that. What we're saying is, that's great, but can you give us some supporting information? Because if there's a need for supporting information and we don't have it, we won't be able to approve the request. So that's the intent of number, number six. Number seven outlines the timeframe that says specifically hardship applications will be received between March 15th and May 15th because in all the years we've been doing that, it was not designated in the policy as such when the hardship season was. And then as the, the last part of that line says, of the year, unless there are extenuating circumstances, which basically means that suppose a hardship emerged on June 1st and we were to say, oh, so sorry, you didn't apply between March 15th and May 15th. Well, you couldn't have known about a hardship that didn't happen until June 1st. So we're making sure that that's embedded in policy as well. Number, item number eight states that specifically that we're not always going to be able to give you a hardship transfer to the school that you've requested because there are important issues like oversubscription of schools. So there are some, I'm sure it doesn't take much for you to think of three or four schools in our district that are just packed to the gills, right? And so the idea of moving students into those schools where we have some schools that still need students, it's just contraindicated. And so that spells that out in item number eight. Item number nine allows us for a notification to families after we've got, we know our allotments and after we know what our projections will look like for a given school. So it sort of ties into the previous item to say, we don't want to necessarily assign a kid to, a student to a school and then have to add teachers because we've gone over by one student. And then finally, item number 10 describes that if you've applied to a school that we've closed due to being oversubscribed, we, we will neither receive nor deny the application. We just, it just is not a permissible application to have submitted. So those are the changes on page number seven. Page number six strikes through Roman numeral three, which says that childcare concerns are not considered a hardship for the purpose of transfer requests, except in extreme circumstance. Certainly, this board has encountered some families who have had some childcare concerns, which we have said, perhaps that does constitute a hardship. Again, I just need there to be an alignment between our, our practice and our policy. When those things are out of whack, it's just, in my mind, it's bad for everybody.
Okay. I appreciate, appreciate that. Is there anything in here about siblings not being a hardship? For one sibling is not a hardship for the whole family or is that in somewhere else?
So we have not changed, we have not changed that, that statement. There is a statement in here that says, you know, having a sibling with a hardship does not necessarily constitute it being a hardship for, for, for the second student.
Okay. Thank you.
So who are my board members that are on this policy committee? Who else? Just the two of you? Okay. Do you have any comments or, okay, go ahead. Ms. Carpenter?
I know it was brought up about how many hardship cases that actually come after it had gone through the two, two processes and then come to us. How many hardship cases that actually come to the board, actually have come to the board?
Right. So it depends on the year, but I believe in this.
This, this past year.
Sure. In this calendar year, we've only had four that have come to the board. Outside of two, well, I'm going to say a total of six. Four of them have come to us by way of being denied by the, by two other levels. Two of them have come for just an approval of space in a previously existing policy where we just had to make sure if somebody came to us from out of county, that we made sure there was space in there. So the board hasn't heard more than six cases of anything related to student assignment this calendar year.
This calendar year. So we're, we're talking total of, have we already heard six or we've only heard four this year?
You've heard six, four for hardship and two for space for out of, out of district students.
But hardship, we've only heard four?
Four, that's correct.
Okay. Four is what we've heard. Okay. I, I wasn't sure. That's, that's, that was my question. How many hardship? So we usually don't hear a lot of hardship then.
No. You, there's, so there's two reasons for, for that. So let me just clarify because you might not be asking me. And let me just clarify. Are you asking me to sort of tell you why that would be?
Okay. Yeah. And I'm sure the board would like to know why that.
Okay. So the first, the first reason is we work really assertively to try to resolve as many of those cases as we possibly can. So perhaps there, perhaps we know that there's a student who has an interest in engineering who just didn't realize there was a really good program choice option at, at Robinson. And that the timing right, is right to be able to get that student steered in that direction where they wouldn't need a hardship. So that would be like one avenue. Another is, so that's, you know, sometimes it's program choice. Sometimes we have families who have applied for hardship and they don't realize if they're in a divorced or separated situation, there may, there may be some joint agreement options between the two family members. So we work actively to resolve those. The second reason is that our, our Appeal Committee doesn't always agree with student services either. They might say, you know, John, you missed this one, right? And this, we need to go ahead and approve that. So those, there are various avenues of resolution before it comes to the board. So I think when it's happened is you all only see those, you see a small number as a result of that. But in any event, what I don't want to do is have somebody in the community who went to you all and said, I have a very similar situation, but I got a completely different result because of a disparity in our interpretation of the policy. I hope that helps.
That does. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Ms. Sandich, do you have any comments?
No. From what I understood, this was just making the policy more clear and more concise for us to be able to make decisions from.
Well said. Okay. Mr. Walter, anything else? Okay. Thank you. All right. 7130, licensure. Comments or questions? 7530, military leave. Comments or questions? Okay. Hearing None. We will move that.
I'm sorry. John, I do have a question. I'm sorry. And this is in relation to what you just said. So if there was a decision made before that we potentially overturned in a grievance, are you saying that people would come back and question that? Is that a concern that you had? I just want to make sure I understand.
So with previous boards, I've had that very thing occur, right? Where we've made a determination, there's been a resolution that's been given for one family and then another family said, well, hold on a minute. We heard about this from a neighbor and they have the exact same situation that we do. Which by the way, just to be really candid with you, there's no such thing as an exact same situation because of the subtleties and nuances. But I don't want the perception of that, that we're, we're not even-handed. I mean, I think you all know, one of the things we put a premium on in student services, continuity and fairness and consistency. And so I'm just trying to make sure it all lines up that way.
That's good. I just want to make sure that's not what you were saying.
No. I, I didn't mean to intimate that we have anything wrong.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. That's okay. Is everyone good to move that to the consent agenda for Monday night? Okay. Thank you, Ms. Burns. And I know we keep you. And this is 6.02 for the 2022-2023 Academic Calendar.
Correct. Good evening. I am pleased to bring you a proposed calendar for the 2022-23 academic school year. The purpose is to provide a review and request for approval of the proposed academic calendars for 2223 school year. The goal is to ensure a common understanding of the NC calendar law and provide stakeholders and the board an opportunity for academic calendar input. On our CCS calendar committee, we have over 25 representatives from various CCS stakeholder groups. These include board members, senior leadership, principals from elementary, middle, high, and non-traditional schools. We have teachers from each level of school. We have non-certified staff and we have parent members from each level of our schools. So it's a fun, lively group. School calendar legislation is what drives our calendar development. So North Carolina has specific laws that we have to follow. The start date has to be no earlier than the Monday closest to August 26th. This coming year, that would be Monday, August 29th. The end date can be no later than Friday closest to June 11th. The time requirement, we have to cover nine calendar months, have either 185 days or 1,025 hours of instruction for students. Our district follows the 1,025 hours. And our 10-month staff have to have 215 workdays in their 10-month calendar year. We also have some local considerations. We have no school for students on election days, including primary elections. That's why we don't have students in school tomorrow. Our primaries, we have presidential election years, the first Tuesday in March following the first Monday. And then on even years that are non-presidential elections, the first Tuesday in March following the first Monday. Odd years, there is no primary election and the legislature may change at any time. And that's why I have both the first and second bullet look the same, but those can change if the legislature decides to move it to May. We prefer workday at the end of April as AP exams and IB exams are in early May. Prefer a workday at the end of each quarter and two weeks at winter break. So we have State Law 654 under the K-12 COVID-19 provisions. It's a new permanent addition to the school calendar law that defines remote instruction. And it still allows hours and days to be forgiven. So those are the days where we have inclement weather, but they say, have a good day. You're, you're forgiven in those days because we have more than the minimum number of hours. For 2020-21 school year only, so that's this school year, all school districts are allowed to use up to five days or 30 hours of remote instruction when schools are unable to open due to inclement weather or other emergencies. And that expires at the end of June this year. Now, it's possible, and that time counts in meeting the minimum requirements of 1,025 hours of instruction for the year. We are hoping that they will extend that, but at this point, they have not extended it beyond this school year. So we've done a lot of work on this calendar this fall. September 25th and 29th, the calendar committee met. We reviewed the draft and then we revised that based on some feedback through the superintendent and cabinet. And then in September and October, we, we asked for stakeholder feedback from the superintendent, senior leadership principals. And this year, we sent a survey to all of the school improvement teams for all of our schools, asking for feedback. So they, they were able to view a video that is almost exactly what I'm telling you now. And then we had a short survey for them to give us some feedback. And then we are, today, we're here to review and get feedback. And then hopefully next week, you all can vote for this calendar. All right. So I'm going to start with the traditional calendar. And the, you, the copies of each of these are also in board docs if you can't see this very well. So we're going to start, like I said, August 29th. Staff starts August 15th. Semester one is 87 days. Semester one ends January 20th. Semester two has 88 days and the last day of school is June 8th. That gives us a total of 173 days. We have, we were asked this year to provide half-day professional development, actually four days during the year for targeted professional development. And so we've added those in and those will be the, those diamonds, the green diamonds. So we have to back out two days. And so our total hours for the school year is 1,045.76, which gives us about three and a half days that we could forgive for inclement weather. There are nine kept workdays, 11 optional workdays, 11 holidays, 10 annual leave days, which gives our 10-month staff 215 days. Any questions on this calendar? Or do you want me to go through all three and then ask for questions?
Is that good for everybody? Go through. Okay.
Okay. All right. So next is our early college. As you know, the early colleges follow our community college calendar. So that's going to look different than the other, the other traditional calendar. So students start on August 8th. Staff starts July 28th. They have 86 days in their first semester. Their first semester ends December 16th. Their second semester has 87 days and their last day of school is May 15th. They have a total of 173 days. Their school day is a little longer than the traditional. So they ended up with 1,115 academic hours, which gives them plenty of bank time. But because they're following the community college calendar, they're going to look different than the, the traditional. They have 11 kept workdays, 11 optional workdays, 10 holidays, 10 annual leave days, and 215 staff days. You'll notice under holidays, they have 10, not 11. And that's because they end before Memorial Day. So they won't get that holiday. Okay. Next, we have our one-year-round school with Meadow Elementary. They start, the students start July 19th. The staff starts July 12th. They have 87 days in their first semester. Semester one ends December 16th. Semester two has 89 days and they end June 8th. That gives them a total of 176 days. They also have those four targeted professional development early release days, giving them a total of 1,071 hours. And that gives them about seven and a half bank days in case of inclement weather. They have nine kept workdays, nine optional workdays, 11 holidays, 10 annual leave days, and that gives them a total of 215 days. Okay. Any questions on these calendars before I move on?
Board members, comments, questions?
All right. What are the next steps? We're going to monitor that calendar legislation to see if they add in those five days or 30 hours of remote learning. And any changes in, in guidance related to COVID. I know it's still hanging around, COVID-19 pandemic. So we'll just keep our eyes on that. And if we need to make any adjustments or anything, we'll let you know that. Any questions or comments?
Board members, comments or questions? Okay. Hearing None. Are you good for the consent agenda?
All right. Great. Thanks.
Okay. And next, we will have 6.03. And this I will turn over to Dr. Kapicki.
So in regard to the academic calendar, the academic calendar for 2021-2022, we are going to present to the board at the business meeting next week some adjustments that we're going to propose for the November and December academic calendar. As you're well aware, there are many districts across the state of North Carolina that are choosing to give their faculties and staff and employees in the district some time off due to some of the, well, not due to, but due to, due to a lot of the work and the efforts that they put in under this COVID environment. So we are going to make some recommendations to our board next week on making some adjustments to do some different remote trainings for our professional development days during the Christmas holiday and also ask the board for some additional wellness days to give our staff an opportunity to recharge their batteries, if you will, because of all the work that they're doing in terms of this difficult environment. I just want to make sure that legally we are following the law and that we are up to speed on the legal requirements of that. So I will bring that presentation to you next week at the business meeting after we make sure we do a thorough research and review of what is we're proposing with our legal team. So I thank you.
That sounds great. So board members, I'm sure you will agree that we will move 6.03 to the action portion of the agenda for the business meeting. All good? Okay. With that, we have concluded our business. And I would ask for a motion that the board convene in closed session to consult with an attorney and preserve the attorney-client privilege pursuant to General Statute 143-31811A3 and to consider confidential personnel matters pursuant to General Statute 143-31811A6. So move. So move. I have a motion by Ms. Blackwell and a second by Ms. Carpenter. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. And with that, we will say goodnight to our viewing audience, and we will see you next Monday, November the 8th, for the Cabarrus County Board of Education's Business Session. Goodnight.